Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and.
It's like.
Yeah.
I don't know.
There's a lot of crying in my house.
Are we live?
We are live.
Are we live?
Yep.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Time is seven o'clock and we're called to order. Good to see everyone. First off, I thank Fox Per Cable Access for bringing us live to everyone so we can start business for this meeting. Our first order of business is the election of officers for the coming year. So we'll start with that process. Starting with the board chair role. I've served in the past year in that capacity. I want to start by asking if there are any individuals who are interested in serving in that role next year. I'm happy to step aside if there are folks interested. If not, I'm happy to continue serving if that's the will of the Board of Trustees.
I would, I would respectfully nominate Colin that you continue in that capacity for another year. So I would nominate you to continue as Chair.
Second.
Thank you. I call for a vote on my own election here. I can't vote and I know that much. So all in favor of the nomination as proposed and seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
Four, zero, zero, one.
Congratulations, Colin.
Thank you.
There it is.
Okay. So moving on to the vice chair role, Deb has served in that capacity over the past year. Thank you, Deb, for your service in that role. Are you interested in continuing that role or do you wish to step aside for someone else?
You know what, unless someone would love to do it, I'm happy to stay as the vice president. I enjoy that.
Yeah.
Is there anyone who has interest in stepping into that role? I know we've tried to cycle folks in and out. Of those roles, anyone else interested in stepping in to serve this year? Okay. So then I would nominate Deb for the vice chair role.
Second.
Second. Thank you, all in favor. Four, zero, one.
Oh, thank you.
All right, and now our third vote of Secretary of Organization. And that has been Christine, correct? Christine, are you interested in serving this year again or would you prefer to step aside to someone else? Does anyone have interest in serving in that capacity this year? In addition to Christine. Christine, do you have interest in serving again or would you prefer to step?
Second.
Okay. So she can't nominate herself now. So I nominate Christine for the role of Secretary. I'm hearing a second from Mr. Fenders.
Indeed, yes.
All in favor. Four, zero, one.
Do we call it the clerk or the secretary?
Clerk.
I think it's called the clerk under the bylaws, yeah.
I apologize, the clerk.
No worries.
So before we go on, Colin, Christine, I don't know if you have, you're up twice on the screen, one for your phone and once, one for your video. So if, if you're, so you're going to cause backfeed for yourself if you don't mute one of those two?
I'm trying to get on to my computer.
Yeah.
But I'm not having very good luck.
See, okay.
So ditch the computer, just stay on your phone.
All right. Anything else with our election of officers that I'm forgetting, Manny? All right, thank you for, thank you for our clerk and our vice chair. And I'm happy to serve again and appreciate the full support and participation of all of our board members. I know this is a full team group effort despite the sufficient capacities that we have. So thank you for that. Okay. Moving on to our discussion of the vacant seat and the process for appointment with respect to that vacancy, we've had the discussion at our last meeting. I know there's been, a few different board members have had conversation with folks in the community who've expressed interest, which is fantastic. That's excellent to hear. I know there's, there's more than one or two folks who have stepped forward, which is excellent. I've had a chance to have a conversation with a couple of those folks. What I want to do in this conversation is to clarify what our process shall be for that and to be able to share that with those who are interested. Come on.
So Colin, I had a conversation with Bob Cutler today because I went in to get sworn in. So this is probably the most updated information on that. So no one has filled out an application, as I think we've referenced in the past, on the back of the annual report. There is a two-page sheet. In fact, Christine filled it out when we, when she was appointed as part of a special to fill the vacancy created by Subroloane. So what we would do per Bob Cutler is we would receive any interested candidates. We should ask them to fill out that form to talk about their qualifications. We can invite them in and have a conversation with all of them at one sitting. Or not at one sitting, but in one, in one night. And then we could either do one of two things with that. We could bring a couple of candidates forward to the Board of Selectmen or just one and say, having reviewed the candidates, this is the candidate we think best fills our, fills our needs for our vacancy. Under the rules, the Board of Trustees and the Board of Trust, the Board of Trustees and the Board of Selectmen meet in joint session to review and appoint the vacancy. So, and the trustee, the trustees have one less vote in that discussion than the selectmen do. And so what we would do there is we'd go to the selectmen, we would present the candidate, we would explain the bona fides. And then we would vote on one or two candidates if that's what we felt we had as a qualified group going forward. And then that person who was appointed would serve for the remainder of the first year of the term. So get us through to the municipal elections. So get us through to the municipal elections of next year, at which point they would, if they were so inclined, would seek reelection or technically they would seek election for the first time to the two-year unfilled role, so that they were there in the remainder of that two-year term in good standing. So it's an appointment for the remainder of the first year, or if, if we had nobody, in truth, it could be for the first year or any of the subsequent years once filled. And then you would seek election in the next annual election to the remainder of that unfilled seat. So, so short answer is if we did that here, we filled the role with somebody, next May, we would have one two-year seat and two three-year seats for reelection.
Thanks for having a conversation with Bob.
Yep.
Land that out for, for the board and for any of the folks who are interested, who may be watching. I did have a conversation with one individual that Deb had recommended and shared a bit about that process, not in the same level of detail as you just did, so that's really helpful, Kevin. I need to circle back with one other interested individual. And certainly if there are others in those two that I'm aware of, that the board is talking to, if you can please share that information back with them, that their first step is to go to Town Hall and, and submit that paperwork that Kevin just mentioned.
So they, I mean, they could pull it right off the website. For anybody who's watching that's interested, they could pull it right off the website. They could, it's in the, it's page, I think it's 213 and 214 of the annual report from the prior year, and they could just fill that out and they can either send it into Town Hall or they could send it directly to us.
Even though it's the page number. Well done.
No.
Studied.
Well done. Good research.
Thank you. Any, any questions or comments from the board regarding the process? Be clear on what, what happens next?
I guess the only other thing I would note in that is this is our June meeting. And under the terms of our bylaws, we don't typically meet in July or August without the chair calling a special. There are probably going to be instances where we need a special to talk about phased reopening of the building itself and precautions due to COVID, but I'm not sure. I'm, I'm just not sure that as a full board, we're going to have the bandwidth to be addressing this before the September meeting. So I just, in terms of timeframe, just raising that for everybody's awareness that that we don't typically meet for the next two months.
Is the suggestion, Kevin, that we would not take action until September, or that we should call the special meeting over the summertime to take action? Just so I'm clear on the recommendation?
It would be my recommendation that we not take action over the summer, that we do it in the course of a normal meeting in quotes, and that any special actions that we need to take over the summer be addressed for COVID and for restoration of service. That way, I think we can also allow, that would also allow us enough time to get a series of qualified or interested, by qualified, I mean interested, candidates for the position so that you actually have a portfolio of people to review rather than doing it in a one-off fashion and then maybe chasing.
Yep, okay. What do folks think about that recommendation?
Yeah, that sounds great to me. It gives us a little time to fully explain it to the people who might be interested and gives them a little bit of time.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
Catherine, Christine?
Yeah. You don't want to interrupt.
Excellent. All right, so why don't we have that be our plan? Do we need to take any sort of official vote on that? I don't think that we do, but all right, anything else on that topic? Kevin, again, thanks for the research and the recommendations on that.
Happy to.
You've been through this a couple times before.
Unfortunately, yeah.
The show must go on. All right, so speaking of the show must go on, moving on to our next topic, any public input? Hearing none. Moving on to minutes, we have two minutes to approve. First, we'll start with the May 12th, 2020 minutes. Are there any comments, corrections, clarifications that need to be reflected in the minutes? You have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Fenders?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Deb.
Yep.
All in favor of accepting minutes as submitted? One, two, three, four, five. All right, five, zero, zero. And now the minutes from the May 26 meeting. Any comments, clarifications, corrections, motions to approve?
So moved.
So moved and seconded by Catherine. All in favor?
Aye.
One to five, zero, zero. Okay, thank you. Moving on to correspondence. Manny, any correspondence?
No correspondence at this time.
All right, we are cooking. Strong's report.
Okay, so we had, we had a very productive Zoom meeting last week. We decided, of course, that we're going to focus all our fundraising efforts on, through the ongoing bookshop because we have no idea when we'll be able to resume and have a full scale. But what we'll do is we'll tailor it to whatever the guidance is. If we have to move books around or whatever, but we want to try to make as many books possible to the patrons when it is possible. So that'll be our focus over the summer. Another thing we had, we had thought of was, it had been brought to our attention that maybe we would want to consider buying passes to the Southwick Zoo. And we got some information and the way they do it is, it's not like a discount, I mean, it's not like a you know, a pass that you either get in free or you get $5 off admission. It's a prepaid full pass. So you get, you buy blocks of fifty tickets at $20 each, so it'll be an investment of $1,000. But then when we looked at, and they do not expire, they do not expire. And then when we looked into how libraries were doing this, most of the libraries are selling them and they're selling them for face value and maybe even a little more. But we really wanted to be able to provide, you know, a discount. So we were, I'm in the process of getting confirmation from the board, but we were thinking maybe we'd sell them for $15. So the, the tickets run, I think, $24 and $28, $24 for kids and $28 for adults, and they would, anybody would be able to get in at $15 with these tickets. And so I talked to Manny, he worked, rented by the staff, and so we would have people, it would only be for Foxborough residents with a boarding library card that they could buy the tickets because, you know, where it's coming out of our pocket. So it's not like a traditional pass, it's a little bit different. But rather that we could have just sold them for $20 and recouped all our money, but we wanted to try to offer something. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And, you know, once the board comes, comes back, I think they're going to take our recommendation and we'll be buying that, that grouping. Currently, the zoo is not fully open, so the passes wouldn't be used right now because they're having, they're not accepting passes right now. But we'll buy them and whenever it opens up, we'll be good to go. And I assume that they'll be, they're in like their phase one opening with selected exhibits and, and that's why they're only charging $20 right now, but when they open up further, then they would, the passes would be, would be great. So we're looking into that. More than words, it's just the, the company, the nonprofit rather, that picks up the books from the library are still not picking up books. So my husband and I went took two truckloads of books into Boston and it worked out pretty well, so we'll probably do that again and try to keep them, keep them clearing out those books until more than words resumes pickup. And then the only other thing is I want to say congratulations to Kevin. And I wanted to recognize that at our meeting, Kevin, he provided a great explanation about the process of filling the trustee's position like he gave it to you. And that was really interesting for the members of the board to hear. So we thank you for that, Kevin.
I made it sound just difficult enough that no one volunteered to do it.
No, it was a process that we, you know, we didn't really understand, so it was great to hear it from you. So thank you for taking the time for doing that and attending our meeting.
Sure, of course.
That's all I had.
All right, thanks, Janice.
You're welcome.
All right. Moving on to professional staff reports, if we can all just mute our lines while whoever's presenting presents so we don't hear too much background noise. I don't know, hand it over to Manny. I'm going to go unmute.
Okay, so Kathy Bell Harney and Suzanne are continuing to order materials for the library. Suzanne's been cataloging the items for the library and Tim has been answering reference questions either through email or through phone. But I do want to focus for a few moments on children's and, and Margie. This has been an interesting year, especially when it comes to the children's department and their summer reading program. Obviously, that's the huge event for, for children's each and every year. And this year, it's going to be extremely different than children's summer reading programs in the past. So it's looking like the majority of the programs are going to be done virtually through a Zoom meeting, very similar to what we're doing right now. Performers, one of them will be doing it live, which will be fun. So children will be watching and interacting with the performer. She, Margie's also been in contact with the charter school and the various public schools in town when it comes to the school reading lists and coordinating that as well. And then same thing with prizes as well. And, you know, she's been brainstorming with other staff in children's to come up with something when it comes to prizes for this year. Again, it's going to be a very challenging summer reading program, but every children's librarian has gone through the same thing right now. So you know, she's been working extremely hard on that and I think she should be recognized for, for that. This is, like I said, a very challenging time and she's doing, they're all doing a great job, you know, so very proud of all the staff here.
Yeah, thanks to Margie. You know, it's a great example of being creative and perseverance through what's a really difficult situation, finding a way to still bring these great resources and, and programs to, to the community. So thank you to Margie and thank you to all the staff. Appreciate your recognition, Manny. Anything else on the staff reports, Manny?
That's it.
Okay.
Sorry.
Leave us hanging there, sorry. All right, financial reports. Anything you want to call to our attention, Manny? The main reports? Questions from the board?
So back on May 1st, the town manager sent an email to all department heads for a spending freeze, just to purchase essential items. So that's what we've been doing. But in front of you is the book breakdown and you'll notice there are purchases in May and those are for titles that arrived in the month of May, but they were ordered a few months back. So that's why you have some purchases for, for May and there'll be some in June as well.
Is there an indication on, on what the length of time that the spending freeze will, will last and what concerns do you have in terms of the core operations of the, the library under that spending freeze?
So I did speak to the finance director because I do have concerns. But the finance, finance director said, you know, the plan is starting July 1st we'll be able to suspend our expenditures for fiscal year 21.
Good. Thanks. Questions from the board on the finance report? Kevin?
So Manny, it looks like, given the closure, we're going to have some general appropriation funds unexpended at the end of this year. Seems like that's safe to assume based on the financial report and how many months we have left to spend that money. So it looks right now, if I read that correctly, like that's about somewhere around $50,000 that would be going back?
Yes.
Or do I need to look at that and salaries and wages?
Salaries, yeah, salaries, there'll be more because we weren't using any subs after May, after March 16th.
Right.
Sunday hours.
So you, so you'd be looking, right, so in that, in that regard, you're going to, the town will be seeing us return, if I'm reading this correctly, somewhere in the neighborhood of $180,000.
Yes.
Right, between the, well, I don't, I don't know if that's right actually as I'm looking at it because regular full-time, part-time in the salary, you know, the, the, the first line in salaries and wages, that would be getting paid either way. The 121,430 that I'm looking at?
Yes.
Right, that would go to those, to available staff because they are getting paid during, during the closure. But the substitute library assistant, the substitute library librarian level two, the pages and the Sunday hours, those would not be getting paid out.
That's correct. So that's about maybe twenty-three.
Right, I was just going, so between that, all right, 23, 24, so you're looking at approximately $70,000, $75,000 going back to the town.
Yes.
Okay, thanks. That's helpful.
Anything else in the financials? All right, on to your director's report, please, Manny.
Just a few things I want to point out besides attending Zoom meetings on a weekly basis with the directors and sales and then the directors and the Commonwealth. Massachusetts libraries did have their legislative day. Normally, they have it at the State House in March. But we did have it via Google Hangouts and Representative Patrick Kearney was the guest speaker, so I participated in that. I served on the Cable Television Advisory Committee, so we had our meeting just to get an update on everything that's going on and as far as the cable situation in town. And we started curbside service on Thursday, May the 28th. And it's worked out very well. There have been a few little bumps in the road, but all in all, it's been a success. I know our patrons are happy. They're stopping by the library. They're definitely dropping off our materials because our community room is filling, is filling up. And all our bins to go out for our delivery, they're completely full. So now we're using the fuller room for items that need to be in transit to other libraries in the sales network. I know staff is happy as well just to get back in the swing of things, a little bit of normalcy going on. All in all, it's been running very well. Book drops are open and, yeah, I've been extremely happy with that. And speaking with other directors, everything, what they're saying is running just as smooth too. You know, before we started curbside here, we were together as a unit, especially the libraries adjacent to Foxborough, Norfolk, Norton, Mansfield, Plainville. So we've been working together just to make sure we're all on the same page. And we're doing that with each of the phases, so not one library is opening up and there's a, you know, a cavalcade of, you know, craziness going on at a particular library. And they, they've been running smooth as well. We've been bouncing ideas off one another, seeing what could be improved, seeing what could be promoted. But I can certainly say here, it's going very well. I've been, I've been impressed. I was a little nervous the first day. I didn't know what was going to happen with the problems were going to come and it's been, it's been a pleasant surprise and I just want to thank the staff for just, you know, just coming back and just putting smiles on patrons' faces.
I got to imagine it's a good feeling. I know how eager the, the staff were to, to engage the community in some sort of in-person, as brief and as protected as it is. So really appreciate all the prep and research and collaboration you've done across the other sales networks to inform the process. And I know how difficult it can be to try and roll out new things in this COVID world we've never done before. So I understand the trepidation, but really glad to hear how well it's going. So thanks for your work on that and, and it's kind of feel great to, to get that first exciting step back towards some And it's kind of feel great to get that first exciting step back towards some normalcy. So thank you. Nice job with that.
Thank you. It's good to have these weekly meetings with the directors. You know, we're there to problem solve. We're there to work together as a unit. We have a meeting tomorrow, so it's been great.
Good, good. Anything else on director's report?
I have a quick question. Are you documenting kind of best practices in some sort of format? Just in case there's some, you know, God forbid, there's a second wave and someone needs to access that information?
So that question was brought up at the last meeting, and I reached out to our town manager. And he referred it to the Pat Castello, the town attorney. And he recommended that any sort of tracing or logging goes through the Board of Health, as well as the public health nurse in town. So I did reach out to the Board of Health. And I spoke to them, and they are working with Tom, I think his last name is Kenvin, who is the public health nurse over at Public Safety. And they're doing the tracing if there is somewhat. Tom said that the tracing would come in if there was an outbreak, like you mentioned. Also, if someone tested positive for COVID, they do the tracing. So, you know, we've been working with them. I spoke to Tom yesterday. And he said, for our best practices here at the library, is to just to do what we've been told. You know, maintain your social distance, your six feet, make sure you wash your hands, make sure everything is disinfected. And staff's been doing that. Even before this started, staff was very good when it came to cleaning the keyboards or cleaning the phone. They were doing that way before this, so they were ahead of the game. And speaking to other directors, they were doing that as well. They already had that prepared. We have the protective shields that are going to be up. We're still awaiting one at circulation. The stations are six feet apart for workstations with staff. So we're definitely doing our part. And the other thing that Tom mentioned was with the contact, it's 15 minutes in close contact is when, I guess that's when it's vulnerable. So, I mean, even in this next phase, whenever we get to it, it's more of like a grab and go concept, like if you were going to a 7-Eleven, just grabbing one thing here, one thing there, then you're out the door. So, and then the MBLC came out, and I sent the email out today, you know, and they have their recommendations. And they were saying that libraries should not keep patron logs for contact tracing purposes. Yeah, we're in constant communication with the Board of Health. I had a good conversation with them, and then Tom as well, who's, you know, willing at any time to answer any questions that you may have. But he seems to think that what we're doing here and what we have, we're doing well. You know, we're prepared.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for Manny? All right, moving on to liaison reports, the updates from our liaisons.
I guess we should just remind everybody the town meeting is next week. The budget is up for town meeting. And so I guess this could count as a Board of Selectmen update or as an AdvOCOM update, right? So the budget is up next week, and I remain interested to see how they're planning on doing this with, at the high school. But it is a go, and so that's 7:30 on the 15th.
So there's, there've been, it sounds like no specific about how that meeting will be run, how the room will be managed, Kevin?
My understanding is that the expectation is that because the warrant is fairly thin, that attendance will be equally thin, and so it won't be as difficult to distance at the high school.
So, safe to attend and vote to support the budget?
Right. It's certainly not being done in a telecommuted sort of way, right?
Yeah, okay. Great. Anything else from liaisons, or if not, we can move to subcommittees as well? We have our subcommittee and liaison designations as members of the board. Do we need to update those today, along with our officer roles? Or can and should we wait till we reconvene in the fall, hopefully with a sixth member to make those designations? Manny, Kevin, from your experience, what's the guidance there?
I mean, it's subject to the desire of the chair, in truth. The, we've delayed or postponed reassignment of the subcommittees in the past because of change in leadership and the need to reprioritize what subcommittees exist or don't exist. You know, the reality is this, as we've talked about in past years, this is something that I instituted when I moved into this role, into the role you're in now, from taking over from Jeff Lovely, just to sort of decentralize the involvement on a lot of this and make sure folks had sort of areas of distinct ownership and control. Obviously, we do need to reallocate because we're without Tom. So the roles that Tom had are no longer being filled in that way. But it does give the opportunity to revisit, I think, for the group and for you in particular, which, there's, none of these are dictated by bylaw or by requirement. There's no statutory obligation that they exist at all, or that they exist in the form that they're currently envisioned in. So we revisited them last year, for example, to talk about nuanced changes among some of them. And we got rid of, I think, one, and then we added another one and things of that nature. So there's nothing that says we have to do a reappointment to those tonight. But I would say that, with the, I would say that if we choose not to do that, that we do so with the understanding that folks assigned to those roles in the last term will continue in that capacity until they are formally discharged.
That's kind of my line of thinking, that we would stay in those capacities. And the next two months ahead will be slower months, given the summertime. And then hopefully, as we reconvene in September, have hopefully a sixth member. And we'll know more about what the business of the library will look like for that upcoming fiscal year and can make any adjustments necessary at that time.
The only thing, Colin, I would just add as a parting thought on that is, I think most of the boards are fairly static in that they're cyclical. They operate on a certain, with a sense of rhythm that is, that works well with the board itself as a whole. I mean, the Events Committee, for example, we voted to forego the spinny series for this coming fall. So that takes some of that burden off of that committee as we're moving forward. And obviously, the Trust Funds and Gift Funds Committee is in the, much of that is now in the hands of Bartholomew. So all of that work is really in a maintenance role. The one that isn't is personnel, because that's the one that is charged to do an evaluation for Manny. And I think we failed to do so last year, or at least if we did one, I don't recall it. So, so I think that's something that whoever is on that committee, I don't believe it's me. And if it is me, boy, will this be an embarrassing moment. But whoever is on that committee, and I do believe Tom was a part of that, needs to take the summer to find the materials and get prepared and circulate that evaluation and then chase the rest of us to get it.
Yep. I will take that up. I believe I'm one of the guilty parties on that committee. You know, Tom was part of the committee as well. I'm not saying it's Tom's fault. But I will take that up and go back with the others on that group and get that taken care of. Manny?
So regarding my evaluation, tomorrow you will receive my self-evaluation. I received a document from the HR, actually, all staff did, as far as a self-evaluation. So you'll be getting that sometime tomorrow.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder on that, Kevin. Appreciate it. Keeping us honest there. Anything else on our subcommittees? Are folks fine with that recommendation to hold up on changing up some committees and the liaison designations until the fall, with the exception of the Personnel Committee, who have some work to do? Everybody good? Okay, absolutely waving arms to be, okay, excellent. All right, moving on to old business.
So I prepared a list. Again, I'm not looking for a vote at all tonight, but I just wanted to get the ball rolling when it comes to an author in the fall to do a virtual program for Boyd &amp; Library. And I reached out to two different agencies, and one I shared the link with the authors, which had some very, both had very impressive authors. But I just wanted to share that with you. As far as some of the names we've seen already. But I know in the link that I sent you, Tyari Jones, she's pretty well-known. She's been on, you know, various television. Curtis Sittenfeld as well, she's been recognized recently. She wrote a book several years back, If Hillary Clinton Did Not Marry Bill Clinton, which got some publicity a few years ago. And then with the other agency, some of the names we've seen before, but Goldie Taylor was on there. And a 30, Ymir Gar, was on there as well. And I know we spoke about Embolo Mabui at a previous meeting. But I think, you know, maybe throughout the summer, we can take the time to delve more into these authors. And whoever we get, I know we'll get someone very good. I know there's a few on there that are local. So I would, maybe we could get that author maybe next year in person. So.
In alignment with our discussions earlier this year, I think this is another reason to focus on diversity. And I think furthermore, a particular focus on social justice and racist themes, I think would be a good area for this, for our library purpose to focus on. So that'd be my recommendation for us to look really closely at that, see if we can deliver on that to help drive that conversation in our community.
I guess the only other question I would ask of that, and I agree with what Colin just said wholeheartedly. And I think you're probably more likely to be able to get somebody who can speak to some of those issues in the fall by doing it in this sort of a remote format. So I think that's a really unique opportunity there. And looking at some of the names that are on the Licea website, for example. You know, one, Chris Bush Alien was on it from last year. That's where he came to us from, I assume. But the authors that are on that list are really, they're social critics, they're podcasts, they're really forward-thinking individuals. It'd be really interesting to, with more than one name there. But I guess the question I would have is, in consideration of the fact that we're changing format, we're not making them necessarily come to the Rodman Performing Arts Center, that we are doing something akin to this, is to be cognizant of the fact that, with that, I wonder how much their booking fee changes versus getting them in person. So that's, it may give you the opportunity to stretch on somebody that we wouldn't otherwise be able to bring in in person. And I would strongly encourage you to do so if you're doing that in the manner that also accomplishes what Colin has suggested.
So I can reach out to the agency. Again, there's, both agencies has an all-star lineup when it comes to speakers, which is great, great for us. So I can reach out to them as far as speaker fees and whatnot, so.
Great. Thanks for pushing that forward, Manny. All right, continuing on old business. Trust Funds and Beyond Books update.
Attached to your packet is a, and I'm going to thank Pam for coming up with this trust fund snapshot, as well as a Beyond Books update, which is attached to the packet as well. I know this has been a discussion in previous trustee meetings, so. The other thing, when it comes to the trust.
Oh, sorry. For moving on, I think Kevin had a question or comment.
I mean, I was just going to throw out there, because I'm the sort of squeaky wheel that's been asking for this to be provided. A sincere thanks to Pam and to Manny for putting this material together so that everybody that's on the board has it. That hasn't been the case in prior boards, and I think it's really important, whether we do this annually in June as board composition changes or, you know, something that stays under the stewardship of the Gifts and Trust Fund Subcommittee, right? So that it sort of passes from hand to hand. I think it's really important that this all be in one place and continue to be in one place and that the board not lose sight. I mean, there's, if you spend some time looking at the multiple pages here, there are real specific requests, some of which we need a cartographer to be able to translate because of the script with which it's written. But I think there's, you know, there's a lot of really important information in here for us to all be aware of the fact that we have resources available to use and that we probably need to be making better use of some of those. We also have to be mindful of not raiding the Bartholomew Fund on a regular basis. But there is a balance there that we probably have not been particularly good at striking in the past and that we could be doing more of in the future.
I was curious, Manny, do you think that the state aid will be affected in the next budget?
Yes.
Or will it's, yeah, okay.
We've been told, yeah.
In the spirit of what Kevin just said, I agree. You know, we have these funds. And if I gave, you know, the money for a certain thing or for a general fund, I'd love it to be used. So if our state aid doesn't come through like it used to, then we have this to use.
But again, only within the construct of it being allowed to be used for that, right? So, for example, the single biggest bucket of money we have is the Beyond Books Fund. And the Beyond Books Fund explicitly precludes us from being able to use it for that, for the things that would be normally budgeted through the standard library process. So just be mindful that it's, the Beyond Books is a great resource for us, but it's not a rainy day fund. And I think if you, and you now have the trust document, and I don't mean you, Deb, I mean all of us. We now have the trust document, for those who may not have seen it before. I strongly recommend everybody read it, because there are restrictions in it, as there are with a number of the other funds that Pam and Manny have circulated. So you're right, and there's no question that we're going to see budget shortfalls on state aid and probably in other areas next year. And that's a battle that we're going to have to really struggle with as the town is looking at revenue shortfalls. The state is talking publicly about a $6 to $8 billion revenue shortfall to overcome as a result of COVID. So there's no doubt. I mean, while, while, while the libraries, state libraries did really well in the governor's budget this year, rolling into the budget process or the first statement, I mean, that's functionally wiped out. All of that progress that has been made in the last several years with respect to library funding is gone.
Okay. Yeah, heartbreaker.
One project that I'm going to be doing this summer, and I wanted to get input, is having a trust binder for each trustee. So we could do this physically, like an actual binder, or I could send this up electronically. And it would contain all the documentation I have for each trust fund. So the Alden Fund, which you do have this evening, that's all we have in there. Other trust funds, we have a plethora of documents, more recent ones for certain. So I don't know if you prefer something electronic or just a good old physical binder with the trust funds. or just a good old physical binder with, with the trust funds and all the documentation.
I love that idea, Manny, almost like a playbook. And I would like a physical one, and I'm happy to help assemble it. Things like it could be, you know, the things that are in our cycle that come up every year that we need to be aware of the elections and the subcommittee elections and that way, when we replace ourselves with new members or even for, for those of us who have been around a long time, it just, it would be a great thing to have. I'd be happy to help with that.
I, I would, I would suggest it's probably not so much a trust fund binder as it is a trustee handbook binder. Where the funds are included in that. You know, that's something that you've get the funds, you get everybody's term, you get the bylaws. You get the meeting room, the meeting room and other library policies. I, I personally, I would rather have it electronically, but I'm agnostic so long as it's all in one place. And I, and I think it would be important for the library, so I was about to say you, but it's important that the library have a copy of it on hand at CERC and probably in, in the office with the two of you so that folks can get it if they don't, if they can't locate theirs with any immediacy and they're in the building. I mean, we could have, we could have a meeting if and when we actually get to go back to having meetings in the Fuller Room or in the, in the Friends Room. And if we had a question, we could just go to CERC and grab the book because we probably didn't take it with us to the meeting. So I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Jeb, for, thank you, Deb, for, for helping us this summer. That'll be our project. There were many projects.
Excellent idea. On the, on the topic of the, the different trust funds, that's something I think, would, would that be something to be helpful to be included in the packet each month? That may seem like over, over the top. But my thought is, one, it's probably not going to change a lot, but if we have that in front of us each month, that's kind of a reminder as we're, as we're going about the business as, as leadership of the library and Board of Trustees, that we're thinking about these and looking to do what's appropriate to spend those down. And to leverage what was the intent of those, maybe just having those for those ten, ten packets per year would might be helpful to keep visible for us.
So Colin, are you suggesting that we would need all of the backup support for that on a ten packet basis as well? Or just a, there's one in here, there's one document that's in here that's called the it's the oh six oh three twenty trust fund report snapshot. Which talks about each of the funds, the principal amount, the Munis report, the Bartholomew ending value, year to date expenditures and what the dedication are. It's a, so it's a, it's a two, four page snapshot. So I don't know if that as a running rather than continually updating us with the, again, the, the script and other documents. I mean, if you want them, then you want them. But it seemed to me like that might be the, the document to update rather than continually recirculating the trust documents themselves.
Agreed. That's page. It's good. All right, coronavirus, coronavirus update in library ops. I think we talked about this a bit, but additional things you want to cover, Manny?
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about phase two. And again, I'm not here looking for any sort of vote. We're not, we're not ready for phase two right now. And I know the governor did put out his guidelines for for phase two on the weekend. And the MBLC put out their guidelines for phase two, step one. And the reactions from the directors, we didn't expect that. We we thought, we thought a little bit differently. But there, but, but the MBLC, I mean, they, they've been working on this with Lieutenant Governor. And they've been working on this very hard. So they're looking at for phase two, very restrictive circulation, meaning patrons would just be entering the library just to pick up their materials and leaving. No browsing at, at that point. It's more like a grab and go. It's very similar to curbside, just basically you're coming in the, in the building. So I'm going to, I actually have a meeting tomorrow with, with Pam and Kathy Lowey and Kathy Bell Harney and Margie. And we're going to go over those guidelines. I do have questions about the phase two guidelines and hopefully those can be answered tomorrow. You know, one of their, they had quite a number of recommendations, including possibly having hours for patrons that are at a higher risk, which, which I agree with. I think that, that's what most libraries are going to be doing when it comes to phase two. But again, we, we're still awaiting one final piece of our protective shield at the circulation desk. So until that arrives and it's installed by our facilities. I, I don't have anything to present. I want to have all my ducks in a row. I want to have staff on board before I present it to the trustees. So hopefully you know, late next week or maybe the following week, we could have a special meeting with the specifics when it comes to phase two, step one. I don't know when phase two, step two will be coming out. So there are a lot of phases and a lot of steps. And after a while, it gets a little confusing when you see a phase here and a step there and and, you know, we had our own phases and then town, the town hall has their own phase. So you know, we're just moving right along.
Don't get too phased, Manny.
Try not to.
That makes it, so what I'm hearing is once you're ready for the phase two plan, we'll call a meeting to discuss and approve.
Yes, yeah, we're, like I said, we're not, we're not ready. I'm not ready for that. I'm not prepared for that right now. Hopefully everything will arrive and be installed. And I know meeting tomorrow with, with, with the team here. We'll have something for all staff to see because they do want all their input. And once that's done, and once the shields are installed properly, then I'll present it to the board.
Yeah, I appreciate you being methodical in the approach and careful in that approach and because you've got the curbside, you're able to serve the community. So like the first step is not a whole lot different. They come inside to see you. So you're able to provide that service while at the same time being really careful about that reopening. So that sounds like a good plan from my perspective. Are there, are there questions or comments from, from the boards? In terms of our, our operations and reopening? Well, okay. Again, thanks for your, your thought and planning on that, Manny, and being thorough in, in your approach. Onto new business, the, my fourth holiday.
Yeah, I should have had this in the packet last month, but July fourth falls on a Saturday. And actually in the packet, I have Friday, July fourth. So I'm actually looking for a vote tonight to have Friday, July the third for the library to be closed for Fourth of July observance. I looked at previous trustee minutes and the last time the Fourth of July fell on a Saturday was in 2015. And the board at that time voted for the closing of the library on July the third. I do know town hall will also be closed on Friday, July the third. So I'm just looking for a vote to have a library closed on July third. I do apologize. I put Friday, July four.
So I would just note the difference between town hall and the library is we are typically open on Saturdays. So this would effectively, you know, that, that is a difference. Town Hall is closed. So the fact that they're celebrating the holiday that falls on the Saturday on a Friday is in large part because like most state agencies and municipal buildings, it defaults to the other. It defaults to the other, to the other day, right? That's a pretty standard state rule. So I, I don't have any objection to the request, but I just, I just do want to distinguish ourselves here from, we're not doing it because town hall does it.
That's correct. Yeah. No, I, I just brought that up because I, I received a communication from them yesterday about they're going to be closed. I've just, for our viewers watching at home, town hall will be closed on July third.
Public service announcement.
Announcement from the library director. We are currently open, but there's a, there is a request to close on the third and observance of the holiday. Any other questions for Manny? And if not, or discussion, if not, do we have a, a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Kevin. Deb, can you hear us? The wave was there.
Yeah, I second that motion.
Okay, that was the I second it wave. All right, second by Deb. Question, all in favor? Five zero zero. We two will now be closed on Friday, July third. All right. The cleaning service contract, Manny?
So it's been three years since we put our cleaning services out for bid. And I was notified from a finance department when it comes to every three years, that that's the, the max. You do need to put your cleaning services out, out for bid. I believe it's chapter of Humor Law, chapter thirty B. So, and I want to give kudos to Pam because the link I sent and it's posted on the library website. It's on the combines website as well. And it's in the Foxborough Reporter invitation for bids. Pam worked extremely hard creating that document. It went to facilities. It was approved there, was approved at the town attorney as well. So right now, we're looking at July the eleventh, which is in a couple of days for, excuse me, July July twelfth, July twelfth. I had to think of my July. It's been a long day. Sorry. We're still in June. We're not in July. I'm thinking of these phases and so.
On the exact day, huh?
So June the twelfth.
June the twelfth.
The final day. I apologize. June the twelfth is the final days, or is the deadline for, for bids for our cleaning services. And we'll see what happens. I know Colin, I gave I sent the, the invitation that was published in the Foxborough Reporter. And I know you have a copy of the, of the packet. And like I said, it's on the Boyd and Library website as well. Do you want to give me an update?
Never been a more important time to have a clean library.
That's right.
Got it.
Just to clarify what I'm looking at on the RFP that's online, I believe it says bid submissions must be accepted by Friday, June nineteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No big deal, just for the, just so that, just so the folks have the right information.
Manny, I think you might have been referring to the walkthrough.
It's June eleventh.
June eleventh at ten o'clock, yeah.
So Manny, do we need to do any, when those RFP bids come in, will we have a role in the approval of whatever contract gets selected?
Um, in previous years, I, I mean, I, I just bring it to the board. I'd have to look back at the trustee notes if there was a vote when it came to the, the bid. I know we go with the lowest responsible bid.
Right. So. I just couldn't remember if that was exclusively a director and trustee vote, or if we needed some other third party to have input.
No, I mean, the bid also includes town hall, but town hall is going to take care of town hall. It will take care of us, the library. So I believe in previous years, yeah, we just
I think Tony, Tony, Tony was going to, Tony will be present, Tony Musali.
Okay. Tony will be, okay.
Thanks.
Do we need a board vote on that once the or is you're picking the, the, the most cost effective solution?
You know, let me go through the notes, but I do believe there was a trustee vote for this last clean company back in 2017.
I believe there was two. I just don't remember if we saw one bidder. I, I don't remember seeing a suite of bidders. I just remember us functionally formalizing the one that was bid.
Yes.
That was selected.
Sounds familiar. Maybe we can package those two votes up in the same, you know, the reopening phase two and this, and the meeting. Deb, I think you have a comment?
Oh, I was just curious to know, is it possible for two different companies to get to win this bid, one for town hall? And one for us, or is it a combination?
So the way that it's, is listed, it would be, it's like a combination.
Okay.
So, but obviously the library would handle the library side as well as the payments and town hall takes care of town halls.
One company. I remember you having a preference for, I think, our current company over a company that we must have had in a different cycle.
Yeah.
Um, so I'm just curious if this company comes back with a bid that you're happy with too.
I've been very happy with our current company. They do have experience cleaning municipal buildings. They do clean quite a number of public libraries in Rhode Island and a couple of Massachusetts. What I like about our current company, they are excellent when it comes to communication. If we have an accident during library hours, they send, they send someone over within the hour to take it, which was, which is great.
Yes.
Their communication is A plus.
I hope that aligns with their bid, so we can get them back. Okay, thanks for the update.
So Manny, to Deb's question, if it's the same vendor is being chosen for both town hall and the library, if I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Where's the decision? Who's making the decision? And what's the action of the board if that deciding body is not anyone associated with the library?
Say that last part, Colin, I.
What, is, is there any sort of if the decision on which vendor to choose is not being made by you? Is there any action that this board needs to take if it's not actually a decision that any one of us are going to guide?
I would say the trustees vote is, you know, needs to be done, you know? They're not going, town hall is not going to select a, a cleaner without the input and the vote of the trustees, definitely. We were the ones, well, Pam was the one who created this document and everything's being handled through us here at the library. So absolutely, it'll be trustee vote. It won't be it won't be handled over at, at, completely at town hall.
But I think if, if Colin, I, I understand your question. Isn't the question really whether or not the trustees need to be involved in reviewing the bid? Like if town hall is reviewing the bid and making a preferred candidate for that, and we are waiting until that has been done. What, at what point in the process is, well, I guess that's being done through you as the proxy, Manny? Is that is that the, is that the theory here?
Yes, but I could always have a, a member of the board if they, you know, want to volunteer and look over the, the proposals.
I mean, Colin, is that, is that the question you're trying to get to?
It, it wasn't, but it's, I, I think it's a good point to raise. Maybe I'm confused. No, it's a good one. What I'm maybe not clear on is the, is town hall and the library both putting out their, their cleaning service to bid?
Yes, it's the same, in the same RFP.
In the same RFP. So Foxborough is hiring one company to do the library and town hall.
Yes, that's how the RFP reads, yes.
So we have, who's the deciding entity on that? I don't have a, I don't have a big concern either way, right? But I just want to be clear on process, if town hall is deciding. Okay.
It'll come down to us. I'll, I'll, I'll say that. It'll come down to us. I'll, I'll, I'll say that. It'll come down to us. We'll be, what'll be the deciding factor?
Okay. Any other questions on, uh?
And so when, so what's the timeframe on that? Well, that requires to have a special meeting in the summer? Is this, are the bids put in by the 19th and reviewed before a certain date? I'm loo- I'm just looking at the document now. To see when, you know, when do we, when would we reconvene to decide?
I think Colin brought it up. I believe it was Colin brought it up, having this part of the, this item on the agenda at special, at, at these next special trustee meeting when we're speaking about phase two.
Okay.
We're not going to be at phase two by, by June 19th. You may be prepared, but.
Okay.
Late, late this month. We'll, we'll have a special meeting.
Gotcha.
Okay. Anything else on the cleaning services? All right.
I, I would only suggest, uh, for the sake of the discussion, uh, appreciating that we want to try to be efficient in doing both of the meetings at once, I wouldn't hold up a meeting on phase two so that we can wait to get the cleaning contract in place. If we need to do two half hour meetings instead of one 45 minute meeting, uh, my preference would be that we move forward as we need to. If it lines up right, then great. But if it doesn't, move forward with the issues we need to vote on.
Yeah, sure. All right. Uh, moving on Manny, to, uh, our Alden trust account, speaking of trust accounts.
So earlier in the meeting, I mentioned that the town manager asked for a, uh, spending freeze, uh, beginning May the 1st. I do want to recognize, uh, the friends at this point. Uh, the friends did, um, at their, was that their May meeting? I believe Janice, and voted on, uh, funds for adult services and children's services to purchase materials uh, during the month of May. So tonight I have a proposal, uh, in front of the board for, uh, $2,000 from the Alden Trust Fund. Uh, and that would be split between the adult and children to purchase materials for the month of June. And like I said before, it looks like July 1st, we'll be able to spend our fiscal '21 expenditures. So I'm just seeking a vote tonight, uh, to dip into the Alden Fund, uh, to purchase library materials. We're talking books, DVDs, uh, CDs for the month of June for children's and adults. So we're up to date, uh, for our patrons.
I'm consistent with the intent of that account.
Largely. I mean, the, the, the materials that we have note that it's, it's for the purchase of books. Obviously, when the account was established in 1920, the other materials that we're talking about were not envisioned. But, but, you know, technically it is, uh, beyond the scope, just based on materials. Um, so if, if you were doing audio books, if you were doing, um, books on tape, if you were doing, uh, an overdrive account associated with books, all of that would qualify. If you're buying Blu-ray DVDs, uh, arguably that would not qualify. I'm not sure that any of the Aldens are going to object to that, but, uh, you know, there airs and assigns, but, um, it is for the purchase of books.
Yeah, we could make it specific. Kevin, like you said, for books, audio books, books for overdrive. We can do that.
Other comments, discussion?
So with that caveat, I would move to approve the, um, the trust fund request of $2,000 disbursement from the Alden Trust Fund for the purchase of books or book related materials for the library.
Second.
Second by Christine, uh, move by Kevin. Second by Christine. Any discussion for the discussion? Unfavor. Do you derive zero zero? Thank you, Manny.
Thank you.
And, uh, last on the agenda is the Bartholomew Trust Funds.
So attached to your packet is the, uh, quarter report for Bartholomew, uh, for the trust funds. Excuse me. Um, one of the things, um, I was thinking about is having a representative from Bartholomew uh, attend one of our trustees meeting either in person if we can, or via a Zoom meeting, uh, in the fall. Um, I think it's been quite some time since we've had a rep, uh, attend a trustee meeting. So, um, I thought that would be good. But I do want to thank Pam for, again, because she's the one who reached out to the, uh, finance department and actually spoke, uh, with Bartholomew uh, herself and was able to get the up to date quarterly report.
Thank you, Pam. Um, I think it's a great idea to have them come. Um, and September would be a terrific time to, you know, step off on that foot if they're available. Um, do you, would you like me to reach out, Manny?
I mean, uh, you could if you want. Uh, the other person I would like to attend this meeting, uh, because I don't think all of you have met him, is our new finance director, George Samia. Um, I know Randy used to attend, uh, meetings, uh, when it came to, um, trust funds. So I would definitely, I'll, I'll extend the invitation for George to attend that meeting as well. You can
Okay.
Meet him and he can really go over the particulars with, uh, when it comes to the trust funds.
Yeah. Um, I, you know, my, my contacts might be dated. The, um, so they might have a more current contact at Town Hall.
And the other thing, you could work with Pam, uh, you know, because Pam's got, she's been in contact with them very recently.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to Pam. Super. Thanks.
Anything else on the, uh, Bartholomew Trust Funds?
I have two housekeeping items on trust funds, but not one on Bartholomew, Colin. So I'll take them whenever you think it's appropriate.
Uh, if no other questions or comments on trust funds with Bartholomew, uh, let's just fire away, Kevin.
Okay, thanks. So two, two housekeeping items, um, Pam and Manny, both of which relate to the Alden Fund. Um, and I apologize because I couldn't find the document I was looking for while we were talking about trust funds before. But at some point, it would be great to get somebody to explain how to read the Munis report. Um, just to make sure that, um, because the Munis report itself, which is attached in the materials that you provide, is a three page document. Uh, the first page, um, talks about library undefined and, and special purpose funds, uh, not all of which are listed, but then there's a a significant, you know, dollar amount at the end. I think that's all associated with beyond books expenditures. Um, but then on page two, it refers to, in the first line, 816-10611, it talks about the Alden Trust, and then it's a dash and a P. And then on the next page, it's Alden Trust with a dash with an E. So I guess that could be principal versus expenditures. So I just, somebody will have to explain to me how to read that at some point because I just want to make sure we're not, we don't have, uh, double entries for funding. That's, that's all.
So it's broken out into non expendable trust funds and expendable. The non expendable is the amount that actually has to stay in the fund.
Awesome. Okay. So that's, that's, that's what's on page two, Pam?
Uh, my page says page six, so.
Okay.
Page six of the Munis report. At the bottom, it says non expendable trust funds, and that's the actual principal amount that has to stay.
Okay.
And that's how Munis breaks it out. And then the amount that we can actually expend is, um, it says non expendable, uh, expendable trust.
Right. So, so in that case, and I'm just looking at, the reason I was, it caught my eye and confused me a little bit was because I was looking at it in relation to the Alden Trust. So on the page where it says non expendable trust funds, right, it says original appropriation $500, and that's just, it's 500, and that's what the original bequest was. But I was trying to reconcile the numbers to the left of the title, right, the Alden Trust. So the 816-10611, and then there's another six numbers there with, on expendable trust funds. Uh, because those numbers are not the same. And so I just didn't know, what you're telling, what you're telling me makes perfectly good sense.
Yeah, it has to be different so they can separate them out.
Yep, okay. So that, that's very helpful for me. Thank you.
One's a principal account number and one is an expendable account number.
Okay, perfect. And then the other question I had was on the document, the snapshot document that I was referencing earlier to Colin, the June 3rd, 2020 trust fund report snapshot. That's a fo- four page document that was circulated to us. Um, in that, on page three, um, there's a reference to expenditures tied to the Alden Fund, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah.
There's, uh, there's two purchases for April 3rd, 2020.
Right. So tho- those were books that were awarded, um, at Tim's request and the board did vote to allow, um, us to expend that money. Yeah, so that's what that was for.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to make sure I understood what I was looking at. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Deb.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else to discuss today? Manny, you're on mute. Well, it looks really important though.
No, I just wanted to apologize again with those, the dates, just too many dates, so little time.
No worries.
Dates and phases and, no, don't.
Yeah, steps now and.
Don't worry.
Good. Well, uh, Christine?
I just had a question on Colin. Just, we had talked about possibly, I know it's, I think I missed it on the agenda, but, so I apologize. But we had talked about doing some type of community wide event in place of, um, the Spiny Series. Did we decide that we're going to visit, revisit that in the fall?
I think that was the, the on, the, uh, online speaker that we had talked about earlier. Unless there's something different that I'm, I'm mistaken. Is that, am I joining the two of those correctly, Manny?
Yes, yes, you are. Yeah, we had that discussion, um, at the May meeting.
Okay.
May regular trustee meeting.
Thank you.
Christine, was there something different or broader that you were thinking of, uh, beyond the, the online author event from community you want to talk about?
Yeah, I just wondered if we wanted to do like a community wide, anything like, um, project, just to kind of, I think last time I mentioned just maybe like Foxborough Reads, like we've done that in the past, or something that might involve, um, children and adults. I don't, you know, um.
Is that something we could do as part of the, you know, when we do this Spiny Series, there's a number of events that kind of align with that along a similar theme? Is that something, are you thinking that the, the community engagement, uh, activities would be along with our online speaker, uh, that we're thinking of? Or is that something separate? Um?
I guess I was thinking it's separate just because, um, we're in such a unique situation right now. Like you said, summer, the summer reading program's going to look totally different and um, not trying to create more work for anybody, just thought, you know, is, is this a good time to, to maybe, you know, think outside the box and be a little creative and see if, you know, um, I can't take credit for the idea. I, I was brainstorming with a friend earlier and one of the things we thought about was, um, just having people read, how many different places can you find in Foxborough to read a book? And kind of call it all the places you can go reading books in Foxborough? And just ask, you know, do one for children and adults this summer, and maybe just the only thing is it has to be in Foxborough. You have to find a place in Foxborough and they either send in a picture or like a little 30 second video and people can guess where are they? I don't know. Just something, something fun and maybe a little creative, just, you know.
Yeah. I like that idea. You could also attach social media. We could do a hashtag. You said what, what'd you say? Foxborough?
All the places you can go reading a book in Foxborough.
Yeah, we could create a, uh, like a hashtag, and that could be maybe Instagram posts, um, as well, you know, on our Instagram page. So yeah, guess, guess where I'm reading. Yeah.
I don't know. And I don't know if that's even our role, so I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes. I'm just trying to, like, like I said, just think creatively. Um, something maybe the library could sponsor, you know, like, uh, since it's going to be a very different summer for everybody.
I, I really like that, that idea, Christine. I mean, at this point, you know, we, we have to be creative in any, any way we can. Um, usually we're creative, you know, within this, this facility. You know, when it comes to our programming, when it comes to Margie's awesome summer reading program and your performers, and it's usually done inside the library with the help of the friends, but now we're going to, we really have to think outside the box. Um, I think that's a great idea. You know, I think keep those ideas coming and we can, we can take that and attach social media to it and maybe some other, uh, avenues. And, um, we should come up with something really neat. But yeah, we can, we could, this could go not just the summer. I'm thinking, you know, through the fall, I mean, who knows, you know, when we're going to get to a fourth phase. I mean, I, I, who knows? But between now and then, um, I think that'd be a great idea. So I'll, I'll reach out to you. Um.
I just think it's so simple. It really, you know, it doesn't really on our part, you know, it just kind of, you know, like I said, kids can do it. It can be as simple as just taking a picture or it could be a little video clip. And then the fun would be that, like, we, maybe we could put it all together and have like a collage or something and actually have people like try to guess where, where are you? You know what I mean? It could be anywhere from, you know, outdoors to, you know, the top of the fire pole in the fire station, you know, obviously safe, but just different places, you know, either historical places or the stadium or just, you know, something fun, you know, something different.
I like that, Christine. That's awesome.
Okay, and I can't take credit. My friend Lisa Sinkus came up with that idea, so I gotta give her due credit, so.
Great job, Lisa.
As long as she doesn't take that idea to the Wallpole Public Library.
No. Wallpole doesn't run, so it can't go to Wallpole.
Awesome. Anything, anything else?
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Christine. Um, well, before we adjourn, I just want to take a moment and acknowledge Mr. Pender's M slide victory at the elections. The dean of the trustees, you're back for another go.
There it is.
Congratulations, Kevin.
Dean just means you're the oldest one here. Yep.
Wear it proudly. Um, excellent. So, um, well, thanks everyone, uh, for, for gathering today and, and pushing through. We will work our way through the phases. Um, Manny, Pam, and, and library team, thanks for all of your continued effort to, uh, keep us engaged in the community, uh, as we, as we, our whole town works through this crisis. So we'll be talking in the next few weeks as we work through those plans, um, and cleaning contracts and all those good things. So, uh, if we have a motion to adjourn from,
So moved.
From the dean, seconded by, seconded by Catherine. All in favor of adjournment? I'm, oh, oh, thank you. And thank you, Foxborough Cable Access, once again for helping us continue to do business, uh, us and, and all the committees in town. So thank you so much.
Much appreciated. Stay well. Bye, everyone.
Good one. Good one.